The next meeting in the five-year, ten-year Confidential Plan of RBRC, regional commissions doing this have to conform to the requirements of the state. However, Rick finishes that portion of it, and I'm going to ask that all of the committee members kind of come up front and we want to put on the table issues that you want to have developed, that you want to have looked at and have discussion about so that we can put those down and begin to address those in our subsequent meetings as we go along. So with that, Rick, I'm going to turn it over to you and Allison and let you all move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome again. We have a little bit larger crowd than what we had last time, so thank you for caring enough to attend. Tonight, we're going to go over some more draft policies in some case they may be more goalish, but hopefully we can take care of that as well, maybe add it to the goals or take it and modify it and make it a better policy. All these policies, I went back through all of the issue and opportunity comments that we got from May, June, and July, I mean April, June, and July. And I went through and addressed as many of them as I could. Some of them were duplicative, and so, you know, I didn't have to address it twice. Others, I just, they were so similar in nature, like some of the recreational comments we got, that I listed all of those comments together and did this, then did a series of policies. So this should cover, I would say, ninety-five percent of what we talked in the first two or three meetings. You know, here again, these are all draft policies. I've just had better luck having something up on the board that people can comment about than people, you know, going on after round, you know, from the get-go without having anything to sign. But obviously, as we're going through these, if you have a policy you want to add, last time we amended policies, we took some out, we added. Here again, once it's all over with, it is your document, and obviously, since these individuals behind me represent y'all, it's their document as well. So Allison, we'll just go ahead and do the first one we talked about, and I'll read it, is broadband internet policy. And we talked about the need to enhance, I mean, that was mentioned at three or four, well, all three of the meetings, to be honest, that they had. And I was trying to come up with the best policy I could come up with, that was down good. Establish partnerships with state, federal government agencies, not-for-profit organizations, Chamber of Commerce, and the private sector. One of the things, in sort of going through some policies and other places, I did find out that a lot of the local governments, you know, all over the U.S., are actually taking part of their budget money in an effort to work with the telecommunications providers, taking local money, as long as it's okay with all the citizens, taking product money to help boost, you know, the telecommunications infrastructure. You know, with that said, go ahead.
Excuse me, I didn't know the right place to interrupt you.
You can interrupt me.
I think that's out of date.
Mark.
I think that's out of date. A better policy would be becoming the first internet-ready community in Georgia, which is the way the state is going to go.
Okay.
I agree with that. I think that we already have a collaboration partnership with state, federal agencies, and not-for-profits, and the Chamber, and the private sector, and I think the policy should be to develop a plan and a timeline for extending broadband, or as Jim said, so that we can be the first internet-ready community in Georgia.
And that will probably go into effort sometime next year.
Okay. Allison, could you note that is possibly left here? Any comments? Any broadband enthusiasts out here in the audience that would like to add something to take away from it?
I would say that the Chamber did a broadband task force last year and had some specific recommendations that I'll be happy to share with you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Allison, take it to the next. I put that there. We've obviously mentioned that on several different occasions aboard these rural. We can either discuss it some now, I also have that as part of the land use section as far as what rural is and what it isn't. You know, here again, I looked at some existing literature, and, you know, it runs the gamut, it really does. But the bottom line is, I was reading some stuff from Michigan, and this is a pretty much, there's not one common definition of rural. It's up to the communities to make that definition as to what rural is and what rural, and what rural is not. What I would like to do, unless y'all want me to continue on with that train of thought as far as defining rural, is wait till, once we're through all of this, and then if we have time, get into the land use portion. And then, as far as time spent on the land use portion, if we got to begin that tonight, that would be fine, but I was looking at the next meeting, and then possibly the following meeting, going through all the land use data and the existing maps and everything that we have, the 2014 map, which is in the package back there, which is how it looks now, and adding to it, taking away from it, changing whatever we need to change. And hopefully, it doesn't need a lot of changes, but if it does, well, then we can do that too. Do y'all have preferences if I continue on?
And I think that's going to be one of the key issues we can discuss, because we have been kind of letting that slide for another years to maintain flexibility, but now we want to actually identify those areas, I think, where it makes more sense to build, and that includes school boards, you know, affecting schools and everything else that relates water. So I think that's going to be a big part of certainly this Confidential Plan, to begin looking at those areas.
Okay. I'll hold off on that until we get to the end, maybe we can get, if we got time to get through.
If we get to it, it's just something very difficult to answer.
Okay. All right. We brought it to possibility, I mean, where some communities, and I forgot, I have called some, city of Troup County has an impact fee or something similar to an impact fee. Mostly you find those in the Atlanta region, Athens, some of the bigger communities, but it's not as popular as I thought it is, whereas you could, you see it statewide. But you need, you need a good computer system, GIS system, to really make that and make that work.
You know, we talked about impact fees and the fact that we currently require, and Harry, we got to be this, what we require developers to do, the roads have to be through county specs and all of other things.
They keep the roads for sometime after subdivision is built out, and they have to have a bond on that.
Two years.
Has to be, has to be then done, the roads have to be done to county specs, and we inspect them to make sure they are before we accept a road. Then they put in all the water.
Water and those kinds of things.
The water lines and everything, so.
No.
You know, to manage, I think, but maybe there's room, or I don't.
We talked a little bit about did we want to modify curb and gutters, you know, what are some sidewalks, those kinds of things, what are other things that we want to require developers to do? And I'd just like to hear some of the committee members, what they think developers ought, you know, when you're thinking about, let's just say, subdivision in Harris County, what do the residents want new subdivisions to look like? We've got a bunch of them now, right now, that, you know, I wish didn't look like they look, but, you know, what are some of the things that y'all think we should require developers to do? I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it, but just get some ideas, if we're talking about seeking ways for them to invest.
It depends a lot on density. I mean, it depends completely on density, the width and the line.
Let's just take it away from.
I mean, if you have a two-acre lot and it's 220 feet, and you're having to bring sidewalk on that, I mean, that's kind of, it's expensive. You know, I mean, you have to look at it in terms of proximity, distance, size of lots, I mean, a lot of variables. Now, from the development and building point of view, you're trying to welcome to get some new growth and things to support some of these other things going forward. And impact fees and those kind of things, from my point of view, is.
Deter that.
Absolutely. That's not something you want to welcome, to bring about some new change.
But if we want to define what we look like, it may be that, okay, we deterred that kind of development, but we encourage this kind. I mean, I understand from the developer's point of view, but.
Absolutely. I mean, you can have a mix and variety of different options. You know, it depends on if it's rural or a little higher density, depending on the areas where you might have some natural silver, you know, those kind of things, or type of subdivision that you're doing. There are a lot of different models that are out there that you can utilize. You don't, you don't really have to reinvent the wheel in different communities. I'm sure you have some examples of those.
Could you go ahead and repeat that last question? I was thinking actually about the next slide. What would you like to ask me to do?
I'm sure you have some samples of other communities in terms of the modeling that you have for different type of subdivisions, for what those would look like. Instead of having to reinvent the wheel, you know, you can utilize other areas. I mean, there's other areas in proximity, I mean, Muskogee County, Troup County, I mean, other areas, Oconee County, I mean, there's other bedroom communities that you could go and model those, you don't have to reinvent it, would be my suggestion.
That, I'll be next, Craig. I have examples with me tonight of different subdivision types.
Okay.
Roadwits, things of that nature, and.
Maybe we're getting a little ahead of your flow here, but.
Just, just a little.
I just wanted to have the general conversation out.
Let me, let me add, you know, something on the line of impact fees. Do y'all charge a subdivision review fee? Ron, do y'all have, what do y'all charge for a plat, the review plat?
Preliminary's are twenty dollars, twenty dollars a lot for a subdivision, and then there's also application fees. Then you get into land disturbance fees and construction fees as well, so.
Okay.
It can tally up pretty quick, which I understand what he's saying, what Craig's saying, that the sidewalks are not good for two-acre lots. That's just, that's, you just can't do that.
Two-hundred-foot line.
What we've seen recently with the U.S. Postal Service is they're making them put in these, what do you call them?
Clusters.
Clusters of mailboxes, and in some parks, they're making them do, they're making them do double mailboxes, but even that doesn't make sense with two-acre lots, because they're so far apart. I mean, you've got 200, 250 feet of road frontage, and one of the sidewalks is going to break, it will deter the building.
Plus the, you know, the size and the width that are required by ADA and all those kind of things. Morgan had a good point, too, I just look back at him. I mean, what are your, part of your overall discussion on this is retail and commercial and how all that mixes, mix will mix in with the residential part. I mean, it needs to be an overall plan, and not just, a residential is the only thing that plays a part in that.
Part of the issue, okay, well, in terms of figuring out how to regulate money, that's basically what you're trying to do, how to fund the cost from the taxpayer to somebody else. And that's the reason the impact fee, fees are brought up. So are you going to push it on to the developer, who's going to push it back to the buyer? Or are you going to find a way to bring in additional revenue through additional tax sources, through industrial, commercial, you know, how, retail, how are you going to do it? So that's what you have to decide first. Do you want to continue down the path of spending a dollar eighty-five for every dollar you give in revenue, or do you want to find another way to bring in revenue?
That's right.
If you find another way, the impact fees go away to an extent, but you, we're talking about, you're talking about trying to figure out first responders, you know, fire, EMS, police officers, all that goes into the costs that we're not even talking about. We're just talking about maintaining roads, water, and silver right now. You've got to, at some point, you reach a level where you have to add full-time EMS, and then that's not even being discussed.
And you've got a chicken and an egg, the density to get the rep, to get what you're talking about with commercial and retail, you have to have the density in order to do it with a concentric circle.
That's right. So you have to figure out those spots, where are you going to start your growth and go from there? And that's where the rural aspect is coming in.
And it can be a mix. It doesn't have to be all, all one way. I mean, you can keep the feel that you have with proper planning, that's the beauty of this whole opportunity. You've got a great opportunity right here to make decisions for the next 20 years.
Any other comments?
Just going to comment, let's make it a little further into the weeds, but if you look at what's happening around this way, we call this flooding. Some of that's being contributed to because all the paved surfaces, all the construction around has allowed that water to run off. As we start looking at developing these areas, I would suggest in the future, and I may continue to keep our rural identity, is to keep the paving to a minimum. There isn't maintenance cost, but how much water is flowing off these areas now? How much will be in the future? And how much can we allow to go back into recharge or areas in the future? Many of these areas, you see in Pennsylvania and in the Northeast, a lot of it is because of heavy rain, and a lot of it is, there's nowhere for the water to go. It's because of paved surfaces.
And that sidewalk, like you're talking about, you can keep the rural ditch, the ditch fill actually works better from an erosion and all that point of view.
But I think we'll have an opportunity, we can do the zoning work, just to get a little more details, but if we can, as Ms. Andrews here is talking about, let's get some idea of what we mean by subdivision, because everybody has a different decision or opinion.
Sure, point of view.
But we need to be careful. We've already had a couple of bridges that have been washed out or close to being washed out because of runoff. There's not much development around them already.
Do they need bridges?
No. Over.
If you would, please identify yourself, because we're making a recording of this. And the other one is speak up so Nancy can be sure and get the notes.
I'd like to ask a question. I will, Clyde. Here you mentioned something about bonds and holding the subdivision's account before y'all take them, before you take them. There are some subdivisions in the county that have been around a long time, and they know well about subdivisions, but there are roads that are still not counted, they never gave them to the county, or the county never took. What, what do we do about that? How do you, what do we do if, if you kind of developer has built a subdivision and done it right, and then they've never given it to the county, or the county's never accepted?
Well, I think certainly if a developer comes to the county and says, all right, he's ready to, to turn them over to the county, then we inspect the roads, and if the roads are found to meet our standards, then it comes before the board commissioners to accept the road. If they don't come before us, you know, that means we have to assume that they don't want them to be county roads.
You got.
But it's the developer, not the subdivision, that handles the law.
Yeah. Cowboy Woods and I know where the wheels still has roads that are, that are not counted, not dedicated to the county.
That's correct. We're working on Cowboy Woods right now, a couple of issues there, but we're working through those. Woodland Hills, you're right, none of those. Don't hold me to this, but I think I got the report a little bit, and they were not built to county specifications.
They are not.
Yeah, you never take them up.
And those, can those ever come? Give developer comments?
I have these two or three people ask me every year to take over roads, you know, for the county to take over those. They've been there 20, 30 years. Some of them have been up, they've asked multiple times. One, one small area has asked three times in eight years that I've been here, and they can't get half the people to give away the right of way. And that's all, that's one of the major problems.
Do you stop what the government?
Well, that's your, your, in the out of getting, taking away one county service that's paying for. But I mean, if you go in District Two, I mean, there's probably 20 miles of roads that are not counted.
Yeah. And I'm just talking about the subdivision. Fair or you pretty much?
Well, and, and you're right, Will, that is a problem, because then if the developers die or they go, you know, build it out, and then they're gone, then the homeowners, and if it is a homeowners association, they're then stuck with having to maintain the roads because they were never given to the county.
And most of them don't have.
And perhaps that's something that we, we want to look at as our, in our requirements, that when a subdivision is being built, they have to do.
In order to be willing to, they have to do that.
Yeah, they have to.
If they build a subdivision, don't tell them the roads, they won't be good.
They won't get, they won't get home from it.
So we've already taken care of that.
Yes.
We've just got to circle around and prevent them from stopping.
Any other comments? All right, let's go through the next one. More recreation opportunities for seniors. Policy creation of recreation facilities, parks, and green spaces that are accessible to the public as gathering places for senior citizens.
I think that ought to be for all citizens.
Okay.
Seniors too, but yeah, that's for all, for all citizens.
Anything, anything out here in regards to rent facilities? I know one of the earlier meetings, someone mentioned something about ball fields out, and I can't remember the, any of the facilities and recreation facilities. I thought it was on the east side of the county, but I could be wrong. And I may have to add that in, that name specifically, or maybe not. I'm sure the rent department and y'all have a hand on that anyway. Let's go down next to more housing alternatives for senior citizens. We will accommodate our senior citizens by developing aging-in-place. I've already been told that wasn't appropriate, but that's what, that's what our aging department calls it now, aging-in-place.
When you can't discriminate, it's a law.
Can I ask a question, too? You've got that line in there, then further down in there, we're talking about bringing young families, isn't that kind of contradictory? I mean, aren't you doing, you're just saying you're going to build housing for everybody? Well, here again, one of the comments was, could there be a better supply, I guess, of choices when it comes to senior living arrangements, retirement communities, things like that?
Well, it goes back to how are you going to do that?
Yes.
How do we plan to accommodate? I mean, are we going to go out there and seek developers to do that?
That's something that you could do, I don't know if you will. I mean, we see, we see telecom companies, we see, you know, counties and other places go out looking for different types of industries, but I don't know if that's what they would do.
Before we put it in there as a policy, is that something we as a county want to do?
Are we talking about high-density residential? Are we talking about assisted living facilities?
I'm not a senior yet, so I'm not quite sure.
What are, what are we addressing as far as accommodate senior citizens?
Where did this come from?
Came from the, I think the second meeting.
From the second meeting?
Yeah, it came from the second meeting.
I mean, there's a natural market for all these things, but, you know.
Well, all of those are going to require.
High density.
City service, water, the whole nine yards. You're very limited to where we can do that.
There's only one place.
And then you get into the fact that we only have one full-time equivalent doctor in the county.
Right.
And so you don't have the healthcare infrastructure support.
More access.
A focus market. Let me, let me ask you this. I mean, you know, a big proportion of your population is probably 55-plus, so it's 60, it's 60, 62, 70, 75. So at some point in time, I would assume that there's going to be a demand, because we're all aging, you know, as I look around the room, we're all getting, we're all, we're all getting a little older. And do you all think that the amount of senior housing we have now for the general public is here, not here, or is there going to be a need?
The infrastructure is not here to support it, that's the whole point.
You've got to go all the way back to the basics, and that would address all types of housing.
I mean, you have to have infrastructure and density to have smaller units and one-level houses economically viable. So that starts with the chicken and the egg.
You need sewage facilities.
Okay.
City sewer, water.
So is that a policy you want to take out, or is it just one?
Rain, rain to keep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm ready to go from the channel. I hate to, to, I'm not trying to change the subject, but I have to point out that when you're talking about land use, you're also talking about the density. And so it appears to me that according to history of the county and the way, the way many people feel, if not most people, the only real high density that's going to be occurring in the county for any time, any period in the near future that we know of would be within the municipalities, within Pine Mountain, within Hamilton, Wayville Hall, West Point, Shallow. Shallow is not covered by zoning orders. The only part of the county is not.
Of course, you have the, you have the Grove, obviously, which is a, of course, a area, but that's.
Now, that's the really going to get, we can do any use when we talk about it. Don't you also have some areas out in the middle that has, has to sew?
Yes.
Along 27. There's a couple of places out there.
85, 22. Those are easy to identify, it's self-incorrigible.
Are we looking at expansion of any of those systems?
I think on 85, you are right now.
I think you have to look at all that for the next 20 years.
George, 85?
Mm-hmm.
Of course, it's 185, interesting.
I don't have an answer as far as the expansion of any of the existing systems up here would be a better option in that regard, as far as what we're looking at expanding and what we're not looking at expanding. Anybody, y'all have any comments on expansion of sewer? I know you had one of the first meetings, made some comments and discussion with Grove and other things.
Well, I think that's why we have to get serious and gauge in this conversation, ask them, are you going to expand, do you want to expand, you have plans to expand? And they need to be at the table before we put something in the Confidential Plan that says they're going to do this, this, and this, and they are not at the table to respond to that.
I can tell you that West Point is. I mean, there's some folks in the Midwest that are trying to run sewer into Harris County now.
Into Woodland Hills, yes. Woodland Hills is work, is trying to, we have not sat down at the table with them. The Grove is the only other one, and then Pine Mountain and Hamilton are the only other two options besides West Point. Wayville Hall does not have, and Shallow does not have. But one of the things that the PRD or the PUD is going to, we've been working on this for a while, and it's actually. on this for a while and it's actually getting close, but, uh, part of that is, one of the requirements is, it's gonna allow you to have quarter, half acre lots, things like that and more, uh, neighborhood setting, which would be sidewalks and things like that. But you had, the very first thing you have to do is tie one to municipal sewage. Now, Ricky Hood with Hamilton, they're about medium right now as far as capacity. Pine Mountain, I don't know. I don't know where they sit. But West Point's wide open from what I understand.
Yeah, they will add, but you have to annex it into the.
Right.
Sewer. I don't, I don't know how much capacity they have. I just know that when they've been approached, they've been in Woodland Park.
That's really gonna be your driver for, for that type of goal, any type of high density. We gotta crawl before we walk, walk before we run.
Do we even wanna go about housing seniors?
I mean, some of that is happening naturally. Uh, if you look at, uh, and I don't wanna offend anybody, but if you look at Longleaf in, uh, Calway Gardens, I mean, that's not senior living, but I would say most of those folks there fit that description.
The market.
And, uh, because, uh, that's what, that's what they, you know, has, has gone there, but.
Because our youngsters can't afford it.
That's right. Well, that's what's driving the market.
That's right, yeah. That's exactly right.
But I mean, you know, the question is, is do we want a, um, what's the place in Columbus?
Spring Harbor.
Spring Harbor.
Yeah.
Do we want a Spring Harbor in Harris County?
Not at that cost.
I, I think, I think you're eventually gonna end up with that. It's just a matter of how, how you get those services.
And the market will not have that.
There are plenty of people that wanna do it.
But your high des, density residential, your, your apartments, your, anything of that nature that are affordable for the younger generation is all tied to the sewer development.
That's right.
Sewer, sewer and water development. We simply can't do it without it.
I think it's fair to say that Harris County will continue to grow based on the fact that people will continue to leave Columbus. But we're not going to see what we've seen in the last thirty years.
An interesting trend, Susan, to a little bit of what you talked about earlier is a lot of the buyers that are coming into this market now from other places are attracted to a more close or high density developed residential, uh, like in, in Hamilton, for example. Uh, as much as we're local and we, we try to get in here and get away from each other and get some space, the folks that are coming in lately, that's not what they're attracted to. They're into those tight net communities. They want the same kind of community that, um, Muscogee County has, but they don't want all the nonsense with Muscogee County. They want it out here. I would've guessed a few years ago that wouldn't have been the trend, but it seems to be trending that direction.
Sweet Bay is a prime example that went from, what, one house four years ago to three hundred houses? Uh, I mean, overnight, it seemed like. And it was because they're able to do those quarter, half acre lots on sewage. And that's what, everybody's attracted to that. Um, but there again, it's gotta have that kind of facility. It's gotta have those, that infrastructure in place.
We all, I, in my opinion, we also need to look at the fact that if we look at, uh, the millennial age group that, you know, we're gonna be looking to buy the houses that are currently in Harris County in the future, they'll like the more dense, walkable cities. You know, what does that do to the folks, the baby boomers that moved out here fifteen years ago and built their dream house on three or four or five acres? Are they gonna have a market they can sell to when the market has moved away from them? How's that gonna impact property values and tax receipts for the county? So I think we need to, as we're talking about all this, we need to be thinking about that impact as well.
But do we really want that growth and development now? That's what land use now is.
Well.
I assume that that's what we want.
That's a great question and I think that doesn't be addressed, but you know, if you've got somebody who wants to sell their house in fifteen, twenty years and they've got in the market to sell it to, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying we have to change our rules, I just say we need to think about that.
It is a great debate in the county and has been for twenty or twenty-five years.
Right.
And I do think it's time that we made some decisions instead of continuing to put them off.
The decision that has been made is by not making a decision.
Well, some decisions.
That's a good point.
I mean, by not making a decision, you make a decision.
I know. We can make different decisions than we have before.
That's right. Everybody can win too. It's not a zero sum game.
Let's, uh, let's go ahead, we'll, we'll move on, but as, as, as far as the senior, I mean, do we just take senior out and do all of them? Do we just, as it is a thumb down on the senior policy, um, is, do we need it?
You get the point that we need more housing for seniors, but we need more housing for everybody.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to address specifically.
You can say we will review it as opposed to accommodate it. After we review it, then we may come up with a combination in certain ways.
Could you combine with the existing policy of housing, is this a subdivision?
Uh, uh, yes, it, it could. Uh, we have policies we did last time, uh, addressed housing in a more generic sense and to be honest, that, that statement would probably fit in there. Cause when I was writing them up, I was, I was like, okay, well, that might be covered here. And so, um, for all ages, basically, we could, we could put it to that. All right, let's go on. Um, community-driven development, sidewalks, and, and this is where we were having a discussion about Sarajevo, Auburn Grove and, uh, place for people to go, destinations for walking, connect to existing commercial retail. And of course, all of that's driven on water and sewer as well, you know, it's.
It's the key.
And, you know, and so the big thing is, you know, the, especially looking at the land use maps, going through all the uses and, and really is, it's, you might not wanna get down through the exact parcel, but picking some areas, you know, where water and sewer are already there and where do you wanna expand off of those and do you wanna extend them someplace else? And, and that's working with West Point and cities and, and even the city of Columbus. Uh, the policy committed to creating walkable, safe and attractive neighborhoods throughout the county, uh, where people have access to schools, parks and general commercial services.
No, I would recommend that that case is moved.
Okay. The general commercial services are all of it?
The whole thing.
Anybody disagree with that? All right.
Why would you?
Yeah.
Why would you move that?
Because I don't think basically it fits within the policy. You, you're deciding what you want. You want, you want sidewalks? You want safe neigh, everybody wants safe neighborhoods, that's basic. Attractive neighborhoods, that's basically. Uh, the part having access to schools, parks and general commerce is going to be decided way down the road, not, uh, within the next basic five years when we redo this. Why not?
This is a description of a permanent neighborhood.
It, it's a beautiful description of something that isn't going to happen for a number of years. Policy should be part of something. That should be the policy.
I, I think even, even though some of these things we talked about may not happen for a number of years, at least we need to be pointing in that direction.
Surely, yes.
Getting into that. And it may well be that something like that gets done only when we do a PRD or BUD where we've got that high density, then, then sidewalks certainly make a lot more sense there.
Yes, sir, no, parlay right off the policy.
If, if I made this the, on a plan commission, we're looking at this to hang our hats off with future zoning ordinance system. If we can come back to the comprehensive plan saying this thing has been noted, then it'd be much easier to take that to the zoning ordinance, get it more specific with, you know, it may not be a perfect proposal, it'd be something that addresses that and we can say, a large comprehensive master plan says this, let's try to implement.
Does it maybe take install of the term? I mean, that should be currently pro-.
Yeah.
So time-wise, it sounds like it's something you're expected to do immediately, committed to.
Committed to is good.
I mean, it, it may take five years, but if you're not committed to doing it, you're never gonna do it.
I think it's enormous. Change of theory.
That change is already, that change is already happened. You, you get ahead of it, you decide the kind of neighborhood you want or where you want to do it through that land use plan, or it's gonna be like Craig said, we're not gonna make a decision that's gonna be made for us. That's what's happening.
That's why taxes are going up right now.
That's why, that's what's happening right now. There hasn't been a decision made and, I mean, Harry said a little while ago, they confirmed it for years.
Would it be more acceptable rather than neighborhood, these subdivisions, that you're specifically addressing a particular title in land use versus the whole county? Because you're not gonna do that by the county.
I mean, in Shallow, that's not gonna happen anyway. There's no natural market.
At the moment. But this is supposedly a ten-year plan and looking out ten years and things could change.
Possibly.
And just looking for the opportunity to allow that change.
True.
So is that the change? Do we have any consent to scope the neighborhoods to subdivision or?
They do.
Okay. All right. Which terms are, directly y'all, if I go ahead and move on, is that, that's something y'all wanna revisit or should we put an R by it or just go on with it?
You need to leave neighborhoods because when you do subdivisions, if you're gonna do it, it needs to be major subdivision, not minors, cause there are two different things there.
Thank you.
And, and it is, people just think subdivision is a neighborhood or Cal, Coca Lake or Eldersley Place, that's.
Five or ten or fifteen or a hundred.
Right. It could be, exactly. So I think you need to be.
Specific.
Specific about what kind of subdivision. I mean, are we talking a twenty, like you say, a twenty lot neighborhood? Eh, fifty, sixty? I think you're getting closer to the neck of the woods where it would, could be applicable.
One of the, you know, one of the ways you get more specific of, obviously through your zoning ordinance and then we also have to do implementation measures. So the implementation measures for that policy could be a little bit more specific than the policy itself.
Right.
Um, so I think that's one way we might be able to handle that. If not, you know, we could add a little bit more specificity to it. Uh, but you know, that's, that is getting down into weeds right there. Uh, it might be, like I said, just better, better left as an implementation measure or something along those lines, but.
I would take out access to schools. We've got some folks here from the school board and the school district, but you know, it sounds like we're talking about a neighborhood school. Nobody can afford to build a neighborhood school anymore. And if you live in this county, you're gonna have access to a school because we're gonna run yellow buses to your house. But we're not gonna be able to afford to build a school for a neighborhood.
Right.
And so I would just leave access to schools out. And Justin, you were there, Morgan's back there, I don't know how y'all feel about that, but I'm just saying that's setting that vacation, it's not gonna happen.
And Susan, that's a great point because there's, there's that tub there that, you know, from the planning field, everybody says we want neighborhood schools, obviously, where you could, kids could walk to school.
You can't just order.
But that's not gonna, but from the federal side, another, that's not, that's not gonna happen, so. All right? Any, anything else on the policies?
Some land use.
All right, let's go ahead and move on now. All right. And this talks about using your existing infrastructure and being very careful as to where you extend it. Uh, lack of water and sewer limits growth, control growth by controlling locations. With infrastructure, which is what we've been talking about last ten minutes or so. Uh, the county will make efficient use of existing infrastructure and public facilities in order to minimize the need for costly, newly expanded facilities and services. And in the policy below that, we will limit development within our community, areas that are economically serviceable by public infrastructure. You know, one, one of the things we see even in our rural communities, South of Columbus still run a water line eight miles to get to a specific small project. It takes them a while to get their money back. Of course, now the CDVG grants and other things to get to, to get to federal subsidy. But without that subsidy, they probably wouldn't run the line. And so that's something that I, I, like I said, that the county, I know they, for years, they, they weigh all that out, the cost and benefit of running the line this way, that way and to where. And, and I think what I liked about those policies and obviously they, everybody may differ, it, it sets the tone for, you know, your future expansion of your, uh, infrastructure. Yes, sir?
I have a question. What, when you say controlling locations with infrastructure, what, what kind of infrastructure are you talking about?
I'm basically talking water sewer.
Water sewer, so we're gonna, but so we don't really have any control over that now anyway because the municipalities have that. So we say we're not gonna allow the cities to annex any more land in so we can stop the growth?
No, the, of course, the county does have water. The cities have the sewer and we do have the one line. But at, at some point in time, as was mentioned earlier, and I don't know if anybody else from the cities, I don't see their tribe or anybody, uh, from Hamilton. Uh, but at some point in time, there's gonna have to be a dialogue with the cities, uh, to see what their capabilities are and, and what, what they'll expand to and what they want.
But I, I guess my question is how else do you control? How, how do you control that growth? If we have the water, they're allowed to tap into the water, the cities have the sewage and they want to continue to grow, the city wants to continue to grow. Are we gonna deny them that right so that we can stop the growth?
Well, what the communities do have through their service delivery strategy is intergovernmental agreements as to review when, when services are expanded. So that's one method. You know, as soon as the, as soon as Pine Mountain or Hamilton said, you know, we're gonna run this line out this way, it's into the unincorporated area, then they'll have to contact the county and the county gets a chance to review it and comment on it. And, you know, at some point in time throughout the state, you know, there've been lawsuits over that where counties, where cities wanted to expand, the counties didn't want the expansion, uh, or they go through, uh, they don't go through the legal process, they go through mitigation efforts, that sort of thing with it.
I think this is, uh, contradicts.
Okay.
It contradicts what you said previously.
Yeah.
You're saying controlling growth and then you're talking about opportunities to expanding growth.
I think the first one should say the county will encourage instead of make.
Okay.
Make.
All right.
And then the second one, I don't think that that's anything we've been talking about, limiting development. I mean, I know we're saying limited from being the whole county to these places, but it sounds like we are putting, um, restraints on it when you say limited in that way.
Well, the second, in, in my opinion, you're excluding a huge portion of county, which is, there are two districts that face the struggle.
Well, would y'all just like to take that one out for a second?
Take that one out.
That's fine.
How much of the county like to live over that?
A lot.
A lot.
A lot.
Actually, some of your own words as far as the county working hand in hand with the municipalities on expansion should be part of our ten-year plan if it's not already. But you're limiting, you're already limiting the, the growth now by not talking about it and not addressing it. The, the little bit of systems that we do have can't sustain.
Perhaps the word direct rather than limit would make this more compatible to the previous one.
The second policy?
Yeah, the, the second policy, we will direct development.
That would be better than limit because limit, it sounds like.
Rather than limiting it.
All right, that's fine. That's why she went to call it out.
Been limiting it for years, but limiting it.
Been limiting it for years, but I'm thinking I won't.
Uh, and as, and as far as the discussion with the cities, at the last meeting, uh, we had a policy, it's under the intergovernmental section, about interacting with the communities, as far as services and everything, and we had to rewrite that, uh, but that's in there. So that, that part of it, about having a dialogue, is in there. Yes, sir?
At some point in time, somebody's gonna think about reducing, you know, not connecting to the existing things, because if you look at the density, you know, it's in South Harris County, three fifteen south, you know.
Oh, yeah.
That's where you, you know, that's by far the biggest density that you have, numbers of people per square mile. Uh, and, and, you know, most of those folks are, like I was, quite retired, you commute back and forth from working in Columbus, you know, you gotta, you gotta have some kind of system to attract businesses up here, where you spend money up here, you know. Those folks in South Columbus then, you know, and in the South Harris County, rather, are shopping, and spending their splash money down in Columbus, you know, because it's, it's so close, you gotta do something, have something up here to attract, uh, folks.
It's a big ask.
And the problem with that, though, is until you run sewage, you can't get those guys to occupy a piece of land. Because the, the parcels they're looking at for commercial are so tight, the existing commercials that are out there. I mean, there, there's a guy trying to do one in Eldersly right now, and he's being pushed back again because of health department regulations. I understand that's state regulations, and they gotta buy by those. If there was a tap line run somewhere, or a treatment facility some down, somewhere down there that would offer sewage services, then that would be, they'd be on target already. Didn't we, didn't we learn that lesson with the Grove? Uh, yep. And the Grove is, you can't even tap into the Grove's system. It's there, it's theirs, the Grove's only.
They didn't allow for anybody else over the Mayfair.
No, sir.
Do you think that would change?
It'd change.
I, I don't know that that will change in the future, because that was part of their contract.
The sewer lines are in.
Right.
It's sized accordingly to their needs.
It's sized accord, yeah, to their, to the Grove.
Yeah.
And it's eighteen, uh.
Let me ask you all this, given that the county doesn't have its own system, um, would you all, would you all want the county, maybe they have in years past, to look at developing their own system?
We have, Eric, have we?
Yeah.
We looked at, we looked, years ago, we looked at our own system.
Yeah, it's been a long time, and we have had, from time to time, discussions with Columbus landlords. Sewer system is a losing, money losing proposition. Not only does it cost a lot to put in the infrastructure, but you never make it back, you don't even cover operations. But it is, obviously, it's gonna be something that's needed for, if you go to, uh, any, some of these more dense zonings. We are having discussions with Columbus, uh, we do have, well, one, one that Brian's talking about, they're looking to tap, tap it in to Columbus's on that end, out in the, the Woodland Hills area, and that's a possibility, so, we're kinda limited there. I mean, it, it costs a lot of money to run the line up for the Grove, we didn't pay it, I mean, the dollars were paid. But, at some point in time, if, as we continue to grow, yeah, we're gonna have.
It's gonna be some point in time, but some, one of the things I think, and it's gonna be an expensive thing, but I think some of that splash money ought to be allocated to something like that, you know, we can allocate some of that splash money, I, I've suggested that before.
Well, then you get overages, right, loans too, but still.
Loans, and there's a lot of ways.
Out of the budget, which has an impact on, on taxes.
Correct, uh-huh, but for the Grove, it was about a million dollars a month, it's a little, four million, I think.
Yeah, I think it's five point, five point three or something like that. Quite a paradox, it's, it's that very commercial that we need to offset our tax digest. Right.
That's correct.
That we can't get to, because we don't have the basic structure.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to bite that bullet sooner or later.
Yep.
And what you're gonna see, going back to the cities, uh, Nancy and I have had this discussion before, thousand acres sitting down here, somebody wants to develop it, and it's right outside city limits of Hamilton. Hamilton's gonna say, okay, you, you can tap into our sewer, but you're gonna pay for it, and then we're gonna annex you. And that's what they'll do, nine times out, that's what they did with Sweet Bay. So they're gonna annex it, because they, they want that money to support their system that they have, then.
What's the downside to us?
There, there's, there's not, not really a downside to us, I don't know, I, I mean, the fact, the fact that we're not in that playing game anymore, though, I mean, we're not part of it, it then becomes the cities.
Part, part.
We're getting revenue from that property, and we don't have anything in, we follow that.
You know, you.
I mean, you start talking about sewer line, that was just a pipe, that's not the infrastructure to process the waste water. And then, then you got lots of government regulations on top of all that, I mean, it's mountains, mountains.
Of course, one of the things this is arguing against with, with Harris County, people not wanting to see Harris County grow a whole lot, and get like Columbus, to get sewer, then you open up a real push for much smaller lots.
Harry, are, are we not in danger of pushing our taxes up right now?
We are.
Okay. So these guys that are coming in, a family came in today, and they were coming out of the Savannah area, and they were amazed at the tax base that we have, and I had to tell them, I said, don't count on that, because it's not gonna stay that way, it can't stay that way.
I mean, you know, we turn down department head's request every year, and there are things that we would love to have, and services that we would like to offer to the county, but to try and keep the taxes low, uh, that means we don't perform some of those services.
So if we're fighting to maintain the services that we have already, in the world, can we grow?
It's, yeah, I mean, it, it's gonna be a change.
It's a double edged sword.
It is.
On about twenty-five cents on your tax.
But once you reach the precipice, it really, it, it has a good impact. I don't have the data yet, but I'm working on something with Georgia Power that will bring that information. But most everything is market driven. If people wanna move up here, if, if a company wants to come up here because the Grove is gonna be there, and we wanna sell something to all the people, they're gonna get the infrastructure there and make it happen, it's not us.
That's right.
Problem is, those people are coming, whether it's a two acre lot or a four acre lot.
Oh, yeah.
So either you eat up more land on it by providing two acre sub, lots, subdivisions, or you fit more of them in those tight spots, and preserve the rule integrity of the rest of the county, so which way do you want?
It depends on, if you say, okay, I'm gonna let them take this two hundred acres and build fifty lots on it, or you, I'm gonna say, well, in ten year down the road, I wanna put another fifty acres on that same two hundred acres. Then next thing, you know we gotta build another school.
That's how we're now anyway, just through two acre lots. We've added, how many houses have we added down there on three fifteen, just in Houston? A hundred, a hundred eight?
We did over two hundred new homes for him last year, but that was all county wide.
Yeah, but just with the new subdivision lots, that's over two, and we're talking about four bedroom homes.
So within our ten year window, Muskogee County's busting it, it seems, they're gonna be our people, either way. If we're not looking at supplemental systems tying backwards, or working on something of our own, we're gonna miss the boat. It'll hop out to the municipalities that have it, that's where your developers will end up. If you're doing the PUDs, if you're doing the planned unit subdivisions, and, and the lot sizes go down, then the things that you're talking about in those communities probably need to step up, the sidewalks, the curbs, what have you, because you're allowing that down, down that size.
That's why you gotta create the subdivision.
They're gonna pass that, they're gonna pass that cost on to the consumer.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, you gotta create what you want, and.
There seems to be a demand for that.
Quality that.
Ten, fifteen years ago, people wanted to come out here to get away from all that, and they were perfectly fine with a subdivision with no curb, no gutter, no street, like, none, none, none of that stuff, now there's a different trend. Yeah.
And the problem we're having is, they're trying to create a comprehensive plan for something, we don't know what it, what we want. We don't even know what we want yet, and we're trying to create a, we're trying to back into this whole system, instead of doing it on the front end.
That's right.
You need to create, we should be, have, well, how we want this to go, and then you create the plan to get there. We're trying to create a plan before we know where we're going.
Also, he's correct, the market forces are such that if it's a two acre lot, they're coming, I mean, it's already been, you already see it. So you got an inefficient use of the existing land already, you're gonna have so many units, where you could have half the units and more paying in, more services to the city. It's gonna cost you more long term, uh, long term to, to take care of.
Absolutely.
Do you want a hundred homes, do you want two hundred miles of road, you mean two hundred acres worth of road, or do you want a hundred acres worth of road?
Every millennial foot of roads cost the county more to maintain and, uh, garbage pickup, maintenance, and everything else, if you put the same number of units in a smaller space, and provide the green space in there like the PUD does, I mean, I'm Dickie Poe, by the way, common property, and I, and I don't really have a, a voice in all this yet, that I've been sitting in for the first time, but, uh, what I've seen, in my experience in Atlanta, Georgia, was, you know, and this is not Atlanta, Georgia, by the way, but, it has the same principles. You can put, um, a hundred lots on two hundred acres, say hypothetically, or you can put the hundred lots on fifty acres within there, and cost the county a lot less to service those fifty lots. And that's what I hear a lot of people talking now, is that's where the county's going, and you have to think that way, the two acre lot thing, I've, I'm not, you know, I know that we've been trying to preserve, you, you guys have done a great job of hearing what the, um, people wanted in the past, and I'm not sure that's still the same, because, like Morgan's pointed out, and Mr. Chapman over here, and with the glasses, Mr. Greenhorn, that is, Craig Greenhorn. Um, and, it, it's, it's changing, it's gonna change us, if you don't find yourself riding the wave of change here, you're gonna find yourself up underneath of it.
Sure.
And still scrambling for things. I'm impressed with all the comments I've heard here, and, you know, I'm an impressive person, but. I have, I, I, I have two questions, and then I'm gonna shut up for a little while, okay, I've been very slow to talk, and, um, the trunk line that the Woodsers folks put in from, uh, the Grove, down to tie into the Columbus, is it an eight inch line, six inch line?
It's either, it's either fifteen or eighteen, I can't remember.
It's a big one.
It's fifteen or eighteen, force made.
Okay. Now, do the people who own land along that trunk line, or in proximity to it, have the right to tap into that?
No, sir, can't touch it.
That's not good.
They didn't want it?
That's, I mean, they can buy their way into it, I think, but that's not good, I, I, it's my opinion, okay?
There was some limited scope on that, wasn't it?
There was, I thought.
There was some limited understanding.
I thought the existing properties that were already a lot hard, room, was able to do that, if they wanted to, that was my understanding. But those were the only ones.
Okay, and is it, is it true, that Mr. Lane pointed out, that the developer paid the entirety of that cost, or was there any bonds, or anything that the county helped with?
The county did not, I think they took out bonds and then bought their own bonds.
Okay, they floated, the county didn't guarantee them?
The county has not paid anything for it.
Alright, second question, and then I'm gonna shut up, is, has the county ever considered, um, floating bonds for infrastructure development, water and sewer? I know the policy, um, that I've gotten down in Catala has been, uh, no more, no water lines unless it can support itself. No, none of that, it's gotta be supported, um, is that thinking still in place today?
You know, I don't, I can't answer you for sure, I know that our water department has taken out a couple of Jeep loans, uh, to expand water system. Uh, they've taken out a Jeep loan to change out all the liters to the smart liters now.
Right.
So, yeah, it has been done, um, the water department is kind of, it, it's an enterprise type thing, it's, it's part of the county, but it's not, so they, they fund, fund themselves, and those loans are paid, uh, out of proceeds they give to the people paying them work.
Okay, back to my question, then, has the county ever considered floating a bond for infrastructure development?
I don't know ever so strongly, it's been a long time, and I know we have, whenever it has been discussed, it creates a liability that the county has to pay back, and it gets the people tied up in, in the budget, and things like that, so, I, I don't, as far as I, I would have to say no, in my recollection of your question.
Within the last fifteen years, the answer is no.
Any other questions, comments, okay, let's go on to the next one, Allison. Uh, this is one of the comments, uh, qualifying, identifying types of land set aside for particular land uses. And I can only, uh, policy for that, our community will use planned infrastructure transit, and that goes back to support development in areas identified as suitable for such development in the comprehensive plan. Now, here again, that's just trying to match up the plan, and where you're gonna run your water and sewer, uh, and hopefully, when you, or run your water, and somebody else maybe run the sewer, and, uh, hopefully, it's, it's done in a fashion that you make your money back, you know, as quickly as possible. And here again, that goes back to that four and a half hundred something, ten miles to one house, that's probably a bad example. But that's, that's the gist of that, and, and as far as identifying the land uses, um, you know, we, we haven't said, I haven't sat down with anybody to sit there and say, well, we need, we need five hundred acres of residential over the next ten years, we need five million square feet of commercial, two million square feet of industrial, and, and where do we want that to be? I, I haven't calculated those numbers, and, uh, I mean, that's obviously something, uh, that could be done. Uh, it would be nice if some of the intelligent people out here in the office, the gentleman back there that works, that's also a member of the Industrial Development Authority, he said he was making, you were getting some information from Georgia Power?
We've been working on a study on some of the impacts, just trying to get some current data, you know, that's not, it's based on facts.
And I have a question, when, when the Grove came about, and they began to develop that, I can't remember how much of, how much of that would that development capture, a future anticipated growth, I mean, that's a big development.
Eleven hundred acres, and I think it was, I wanna say, I bet, I was gonna say about five hundred residential units.
It's more than that, more than that. I'm thinking more, it's like, closer to twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred.
Or something like, and the reason that that was approved was to try and have a diven, diven, dense area, saving other lands from development, so that we can preserve green space for a longer, longer period of time. And by having it right out there at the interstate, hoping that a lot of the traffic will not use county roads, will hop on the interstate, go to Columbus to work, and whatever.
And I'm sure, you know, prospective developers coming in, dependent on what market they're targeting, or, I mean, they're gonna look at that, and wonder when that's gonna start, and, you know, and, I mean, obviously, if it's, if it's done, that's a preliminary plan, the drawings show, it's gonna be a beautiful development, I mean, just, I think, top notch, so, so that's something we would need to factor in as well, but, um, you know, as we go through the planning process, it probably would be a good idea to have those benchmarks, you know, that you need five hundred acres or a thousand acres, I'm not quite sure how specific we can get them, but obviously, as we're going along, if, if, if anybody has an idea or an inkling about how much of land, those land uses we need, I'll be, I'll be glad to listen. As far as the policy is that.
This gentleman has a comment.
It's, uh, it is just a comment, and one sentence comment, it appears to me, as we go over these, that everything in this plan being promoted, is assuming that we are looking for turning the county into. that everything in this plan being promoted is assuming that we are looking for turning the county into an urban county. Every word of these that I've read allows for that. So when we get to the final thing about land use, if we adopt a different land use plan, that means that all of this stuff we're talking about now is going to be in contradiction to the land use plan.
Well, all of this is, has to be around these counties. That leaves a huge part of the county that we haven't even addressed yet. What are we going to do about all of the spaces that don't have water, don't have sewage? What are we gonna do with those places and, uh, lot sizes and all of that?
Thirty to forty percent, thirty-three percent of the land's in a conservation easement already.
That's right.
It, it doesn't generate any revenue. Gotta put the string on.
But we've got a dozen policies here that deals with a very small part of the county that we're gonna go off.
And that part of the county has not seen the growth that, say, the district that I represent has seen, which is fifty-fifth and fourth.
Or Eldersley, yeah.
Eldersley, representative. Those are the most interesting districts in the county. And when I, when I took a look at this, and I thought, this really addresses mainly the disfamilies.
The growth around where the infrastructure is.
Where the infrastructure is.
Which I think is important. I think we've got to deal with that, but we got a whole other part of the county out there that we're not even talking about.
You're gonna include one oh three in that, but West Point's gonna be a player.
I could do more.
You're gonna include one oh three in that, cause West Point's gonna be a player.
Yeah.
Or do you? Yeah.
They're gonna come down that one, one oh two. Some place they've got a gap.
And Harris County. All right. So as far as, here again, as far as the policy is concerned, is, is that something to keep in and take out? You know, when I read it, what I looked at was, you know, making sure that your infrastructure expansions meet the need, meet, meet the demand. And, and here again, just not running it. I know y'all wouldn't run it just to be running it. But in other words, it's, it's a good expansion. It's a good moneymaker or, you know, you're at least breaking even on a lot of those things. And, and that's how I look at that. But if that's something, like I said, if you think the policies and relationship to future development, if we need to, you know, take some of those out and do whatever, then, then we can obviously do that. Any other comments on that policy? And obviously, a few days from now, somebody's reading back over and they go, no, I don't think we need to pick that out. Give me a call. Let's go to the next one. All right. This is one of the things, I know the county's in the process of doing this anyway, came up with, uh, reviews zoning ordinances and development regulations, uh, policy, update zoning subdivision, other development regulations on a as needed basis. Uh, and that could also be done. If we put a timeline on it, it becomes an implementation measure. So that could eventually become a...
I don't know that you want to be reactive. I think what we kind of anticipate is once we put this plan in place, uh, and I kind of, you know, Morgan's comment, we gotta decide as a county what we wanna be. And then, then you develop the policies to get you where you wanna be. And that's, it's gonna be expensive to do some. But I think as soon as we get this policy, it's not just on an as needed basis. We need to fully sit down and review our total package of ordinances.
Okay.
And so...
We need some professional assistance to do it.
And it's not something that we can do locally. We can all add to it. But we need to be able to hire someone from, from outside that has this report inside if we happen to live here. That happens to have the expertise to lead us there.
All right.
So just taking on that last phrase, you know, if I can say what you mean.
Yeah, take out the last five words.
Yeah, I think it's, uh...
All right, let's go down to the next one. More education of county departments on what information, and I wasn't quite sure I remember when this came up, uh, more education county departments on what information the board of commissioners and planning commission needs for decision making. I wasn't quite sure. I didn't know if it was talking about sending staff to training. Um, Ron, you might be more attuned to that when that comment came up, cause that was at the second meeting.
We already had that in place.
At the library. Okay.
Yeah, we do. Whenever preliminary plats come in, we automatically send them out to thirteen departments. So they are aware and then they get about ten to twelve days to make comments and then, so...
So then you think we could just go ahead and take that out then?
You could, cause it's already been done.
All right. But, but Ron, are you on, to provide zoning education, are you staying, how do y'all stay ahead of zoning changes that may be needed? And it goes back to the one before. If you, if you see a change that needs to be addressed, how do y'all pass that on to, not be included at all? But how do you, how do you make changes when you need to?
One of the, like, a typical example was the last PRD that was done, we have seen that that was not really what we wanted as a planning commission and as staff. And the planning commission and myself went back to the drawing table and that's the reason we're putting together a new PRD. So it does come at times when you see a need for it, uh, that there's something that needs to be changed. Uh, and it's, I hate to say it, but it's hit or miss sometimes.
It's more reactive.
It, it's more reactive than it is, but, but if, I mean, I know for you, I've only been here for six years, but during that time, I've seen a lot of things in the ordinance, cause I have to read it constantly, that some things that need to be addressed, that need to be, um, better explained, um, that can explain themselves instead of having, you know, our ordinance is online, but it doesn't mean a hell of beans if you can't read it. If it doesn't make sense. And we've got contradictory things in, as far as definitions, that aren't there, some that are there. Matrix, we've got businesses that are listed and not explained in the, in the definitions, things like that that need to be addressed.
But there are steps in place. If you see something that needs to be changed, you can make a recommendation.
Yeah, it would, it would be, it would be a text amendment. Uh, and, and, and even a citizen can do that.
And if I'm an arbiter, I mean, you have a board, elected officials interpret what you ask.
Correct.
How well do the departments respond when you said something about, and what is the feedback?
When I first, well, when I first started, I was doing that and I had ten of the thirteen say that they didn't want them. Uh, but since we've been discussing some things in the past six months, I've put them back into place. Whether I get comments or not, I'm gonna do my part. So that's what I have, that's what I wanna do is at least put it out there so that they can't come back and say, we didn't know about this.
Would you rather they do more?
Um, he, I mean, when you think about it, if, if preliminary plat's coming in for twenty lots, that's not gonna make a big impact on hardly anything. But when you think eighty to a hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred lots, that's gonna make differences. And I have seen some comments, Jack's been one of the few that's responded, um, where that has, at least it's been voiced. So, and, and discussed.
All right, let's move on to the next one. Uh, strategy of recommendation regarding strip commercial development mixed use with community, with commu, and then had mixed use with community identity. Uh, policy encourages development of a rational network of commercial nodes, villages, or other activity centers to meet the service needs of citizens, avoiding inefficient strip development along major roads.
Where are we gonna do that without infrastructure?
You're not.
That's just not gonna happen.
Well, it depends on how dense your nodal development is.
We're gonna, you gotta sort of support it.
Are we talking about putting it in the city of Hamilton? Are we talking about putting it in Pine Mountain? Cause that's the only place you can go.
Now, there's, there's strip, I mean, there's, there's nodal opportunities in the southern part.
Would there be any allowances for the Grove to have that sewer line being tapped into by commercial in the future?
The Grove has commercials.
The Grove does.
It's got commercials mixed in it.
Mixed in it, but as you have the winding way next to one eighty, I eighty, I, I one eighty-five or... That's all done?
That's it, man.
So there, there isn't any more potential for nodes in that area? Have it tied into that?
There's only other, one other landowner adjacent to it. I don't know if they have something working out there or not. I assume not.
Well, you're saying adjacent, but I was first saying within an area within a certain distance that would make an economical. And I don't know the answer to the question, but I'm just wondering if anybody's looked at that.
And also, a node doesn't necessarily mean high density in my view. If you have, if you have two intersections and that makes a node, and if you've got five acres on each one, look, and you wanna do five, four dollar generals on each corner, as long as they can get the septic tank in, you've created a node.
Very limited to what kind of commercial you can hold in.
Right.
So John, are you asking, for the location of the sewer?
For the location of the sewer, going from south, north to south down that line, are there opportunities for particular nodes along there that could be compatible? And I don't know if you get to that.
On that particular line?
Great question.
I doubt.
We're, yeah. We were told based on the build out plan for the Grove that there would be very, very little extra capacity that a county office or something maybe could tie into it, but...
Nothing.
Otherwise, we said no.
Thank you. That'd be my question.
Uh, is that a policy, you know, we wanna keep to, to address that comment? Uh, I mean, I think it makes, I don't think you're ever gonna get rid of strip development. I don't, it's, because if you've got twenty-five thousand cars going down the road and properties for sale that get access, then I don't think that's gonna happen. But from a traffic control standpoint, traffic safety standpoint, you know, the better you can put them on the corners if that land's available and control points of ingress and egress a little bit better, it normally makes for a better, in my opinion, quality development situation. But, uh, obviously, like, like I said, I don't think you're, you're ever gonna totally get away from it.
Well, there's nothing wrong with, on Javon's side, by the way, uh, requiring D seven, X seven lanes.
Right.
I mean, we don't wanna discourage that. I mean, that's gonna pay the taxes.
I mean, state routes, I encourage, well, state routes required all the time. I don't know about, I think, local routes, y'all require D seven, X seven lanes depending on the size of the, the commercial development or...
Most of them are on state corridors anyway.
Most of them's on state, so it doesn't matter.
Haven't, haven't we, McQuar, don't we have commercial nodes identified on the comprehensive plan like an eight five and eight nine?
The current one, yes.
We have those for...
Interchange, yes, sir. And as well as like Catala and Eldersley, you know, those are all, those are all areas that are already notable in nature and continue along that way. And Mr. Chairman, am I pushing it too far here? Do we need to, I know there's something else we wanted to get to as far as...
A lot of this discussion is far what, far from what we wanted to get to also. But yeah, I do want to dive into the end.
Okay. All right. We're getting towards the end and I'll go, um, put airport in economic development section, uh, update and expand and improve and maintain, um, existing transportation facilities such as Harris County's airport, street road network, bike and pedestrian.
You're talking about airport too. I think we wanna look at, talk about some of that acreage around the airport for, you know, having it available for aviation related business.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's good. Yeah, and that's good, that's good money too. Good dollars. All right. All right, let's go on to the next one. Uh, we had a question of our schools at capacity. Um, I'm, I didn't know whether they were or not, but I thought, well, if they're getting close, then, you know, there's a policy that we can come up with that. County will work with local school board to encour, encourage school location decisions that support the community overall growth and development plans. And then, I don't know, do y'all do that now?
No.
Ron, is that something?
No.
No.
Like I said, we give them a preliminary plat and that's about it.
Okay. Um, I think that, I don't think this word is quite correct. It comes up.
Are you saying, are you saying you want the schools to be situated to support the growth? Or do you want us to go where the growth is going?
You're gonna, I mean, the schools will end up making that determination as far as the areas where they would like to go. But obviously, they have a good idea working with the counties on, okay, what, what infrastructure do you have? What do you have? It's just those open channels of communication.
Well, we have to work on those, cause we've tried those in the past and they have not been very successful. We're more than open on the school board, at least monthly, quarterly. Had been a whole lot of cooperation.
All right. Anybody have any ideas how we bridge that to where there is some cooperation? Any ideas?
Have you had a need for development needs to be resolved? How do we know? Oh, we get the subdivision plan once it's approved. We don't know what the growth plans are.
No, 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 no. You get it, you get it prior to construction.
I'm sorry. I, I mean, I'm not trying to drag you on the bus, but that's not the way we know. We don't know what the growth plans are. It's like, we see the subdivision once it's, once it's done, once it's proposed. We don't know where the county wants to grow. We don't know what their thoughts are. We don't even know, you know, are we gonna put a place where they're gonna have commercial development or do they, there's no, there's no cohesiveness there at all. It's kinda like working with the cities. But this comes like school location.
Right.
Where you pull them, do you need more schools? We're gonna get one for it. We certainly, we certainly gotta do something at the high school. And somewhere in some parts.
What would be the natural place for another?
That's a huge debate.
Yeah, but then, once you, once you do that, you kinda break up what, what everybody loves about the county. Once you build another school, you know, it's high school, you broke in the county at that point. So one of the things we're doing, and it's further down in there, uh, when it talks about building college and career center, that's not, I mean, that's for additional education purposes, but that's also to leave some space at the high school and take some pressure off so you can keep it as a cohesive unit for as long as you possibly can.
And you have to.
Go ahead.
And you have to bring into account the, the, the state allotment formulas for building those schools. Uh, and you would have to match that up with the plan, because you're asking if we're full. Well, according to the state's allotments, some of our schools are at capacity and some are not. We, we have extra earned instructional units, which, that's a fancy word for classrooms at some schools where we're short classrooms at other schools. So, um, they allot us money based on needs, um, based on, um, the allotments that we learn through the state. Um, a lot of local money will come, when you're talking about building another school, local money's gonna be put in there too. So not to get into the complex formula, but the state funding and allotment formula would have to be taken into account with this as well. That is what they will allot us.
We're going through that process next month.
Well, percentage is, is local, but the school board.
Volts, about half, it's about fifty to fifty.
There's a rule.
And I, I just have a question. The school system, I mean, do you have a plan that says, you know, in five years, you're gonna have to put school over here and two years run down here or...
Where we have, every school system's supposed to have a, is required to have a five year facility. We're looking next month, John Ramich, who's our regional consultant, is coming down September twenty-seventh, I believe, to, to...
Okay.
Yeah, September twenty-seventh to go over those, to, to basically go over where we're at, our current reality, um, what we need, what we've earned, and he's gonna go over that whole process with us.
And what our options are.
And what our options are, because, um, you know, reality, reality plays a big...
And what our options are, because, um, you know, reality, reality plays a big part in that.
Oh, yeah.
If John's actually out there, Miller, y'all, they do that.
Does it have y'all up since twenty thirteen? And that's, I mean, it's, you don't, you don't have, miller rate increases the last thing you hear.
Right.
You need more, you need more.
So you got to figure out, you got to figure out, that's right. And that's why the cooperation with county is so important, because tax dollars are going to come from commercial or retail there too. So it, to alleviate the strain on taxpayer, you've got to figure out ways, so there's got to be some cooperation.
Right, yeah. And this is the way I look at it, real simple. Houses go up a lot faster than schools do.
That's right.
And you're not going to get any state money because those kids won't be able to build.
Yes, ma'am, because they were.
You're not going to be able to build what you think is coming, or what you hope comes, but only what's happened here.
Yes, ma'am, because they, they, uh. They base our, they base our state allotments on a average of the past five years. So if we did not experience a lot of growth, which I think right now our projected growth is twenty-two students per year, well, if you have twenty-two hundred houses that go up, that can change in a hurry. But you're still working off the old projection for that many, for a few years.
And that's going to take time, though. It's not going to happen in a year. You're not going to get twenty-two hundred houses. And effectively, we're at, what, two hundred, two hundred permits a peak? We're at four sixty, so some perspective is needed here.
Yeah, but those, those two, they're not just two, two kids per house anymore.
That's, that's correct, because they're bigger houses and they're bigger families.
And you have no way of predicting what age group of those kids will be.
Well, you just have trains. If you have a small house, you have Olympic kids. If you have larger houses, you have high school kids. So I hate to, I know I could go way back and no one's going to tell me, but, um, when I would get the flats, I would have, okay, in this area, I've got forty new houses going up. In this area, I've got sixty new houses. These are two-hundred-thousand-dollar houses. That means I'm going to have middle and high school kids, be probably three-hundred thousand at this point. And I kind of predict the, the wave that was coming, so that we could work with the state on developing that facilities plan and get schools built and buy property, and, and so we weren't overcome with all of that. And to Morgan's point, during that time, we had quarterly meetings with the commission, where we hosted it some quarters, and the commission hosted it some quarters, and we would each do a presentation about where we were at that point. So those probably do need to be reinstated, so that we can have some more dialogue. But you don't have, you don't have to be blindsided, because you know what's coming. You know what's on the, on the development side. And if you know the size of houses, you can pretty much project whether there's going to be elderly kids or high school kids for the majority part.
And we're kind of like y'all too. We don't get these developments till the developer comes to us. So, but if you've got a question about any of it, I can, I can tell you where they are and where they're coming, to an extent. I can't predict the future, but I can, what I hear on the word, you know, on the street, this is coming, this is coming, that's coming.
It's coming, right now, it's coming to Forts and Everly.
Yes.
Those are the two big spots.
Yes.
Current, current trends are going to throw your numbers off there.
Yep.
If the younger generation can't afford to live here.
That's right.
If they want to be in this address, they're going to live with mom and dad.
That's right.
If they're living with mom and dad, then their kids are with mom and dad. You don't have to get a scope on that many children coming in here on, on existing.
Well, one of the, we, we were trying to figure out, how can you project? You don't know, kindergarten is a lottery, you've got a fixed number of people that are coming. I mean, pre-k is a fixed number. You know how many you got. You have no earthly clue how many kindergartners you're going to have.
No.
No clue, because when you talk to people around the state, they say, well, why don't you go to your local hospital? Well, there's five hospitals you could go to here. How in the world are you going to know which one's coming here, which one's going to Columbus, or Warm Springs, or Valley? There's no way you can predict that. All right, let's go ahead. Eric, did you want, I mean, I can, I can stop it now, we're getting close to the division hour at seven, if you want.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to take, uh, take five minutes.
All right.
Start our division meeting. Yeah, that would be good. And then, we've had a good flow of conversation going, but I do want to open it up, uh, committee members that are going to work on this. Uh, we don't have any, much time to get into anything in depth, I don't think, tonight. But we certainly need to, can we just throw out some suggestions or topics that we want to deal with? And then sit down and maybe just a committee orientation type thing and handle, so we know things that want to be addressed in this comp plan. I know there's a lot of things that have to get out of the comp plan, we get to enter our ordinance and whatnot. I know there are lots of, and I won't get into those if that comes back. What are, what are areas or issues that the gentleman would like to see addressed and handled in this comp plan?
I think we've got to get to, there's two main issues that I, that I'll link back. How, how do we want it to look? We've got to figure out how do you want this to look? You've got to figure out how you can zone it and, and create your land use plan and make it look that way. And then your ordinances will show you how that comes about. The type subdivision you want, the type, uh, commercial development you want. But we're trying, we're still, we're creating chicken, and we don't even have the egg. I mean, it, we've got to, we've got to work this thing another way. And we're too far in it, I think, at this point. I don't know how you get to the end point, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't know how you get a comprehensive plan, and we don't know where we're going.
Well, I think if I was to say one thing about that, um, everybody talks about market-driven. I say the market's going to determine a lot of that. You can't make the whole round and put the square peg into.